Clark, Fish, Jorgensen, Cole, Steen, Mayor Buck.
Well, the draft budget was presented to you a week ago or so. Couple of things, a couple of questions to ask, the mayor asked to have board rates for comparable cities included. So that's in there. Full-time budgeted wages, 2022 to 23, including FICA, retirement, et cetera. Those were included, including the two new potential employees. So.
So that's a piece to mark my hand.
Golf course. Not in 23. We're still trying to do one in 22.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But that was already a question.
Yep, correct. True.
Thanks for helping the budget.
We do a lot for like.
That's the fun balance.
Yeah, Huron's a little bit different than everybody else there. I think they're a commission type. So the mayor gets a little paid, and Mitchell converted to city administrator eh, four or five years ago, but I don't think they, so the mayor was much more involved with more than just running meetings. You know, supervising stuff, so that kind of explains those two. It's, it's all the kickbacks you're allegedly getting. Yeah, about 413,000 we're long in the general fund.
We're over.
Over. Expenditures over revenues. You know, the biggest, the biggest one item in the proposed budget is general government buildings. You know, we've got a half a million in there for repairs. It really boils down to what short-term or medium-term plans are for City Hall. You know, if we're going to stay here in these two buildings, yeah, we're going to have to invest. And I think the report was 800-plus thousand in these two buildings. We'd need to start off probably with the roofs. You know, if we're, if we're looking at moving forward with a new facility, not just renovating this one, you know, we would, we would need to start, we've got designers moving along. I mean, it's certainly not final. They're looking at a design for this location that can be moved just about anywhere. We could reduce that half a million in, in repairs, you know, down to 150 to 200 and, and put it towards architectural services to start working on more of a final or completed design on a City Hall. We also need to include in there, um, Public Workshop. We need to start working on that as well. So, you know, taking that into account, if you drop that down to 200, there's 300 of the 413. So that's the vast majority of it.
But wouldn't we want to start to stop tiling some of that?
We could, and you know, I think the, the cost for the City Hall was eight million roughly, and I can't, four to six or five million for Public Works, if I remember searching me correctly.
That was a floor five.
So.
That was a floor, that was like a town hall.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, but they're still talking about six to eight.
Yeah.
Architectural fees or architectural costs have increased about 30%. Unfortunately.
Yeah, everybody's building.
I think we're going to have to have something pretty, pretty basic.
Yeah, as, as far as a building goes, you know, what staff is looking at, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but just something that's functional. You know, we don't need the pillars and the, and the, you know, two-level skylights, glass walls, et cetera. Yes, thank you. Yep, something that's functional, um, that's efficient and will, you know, something that can be expanded in the future. You know, this isn't a building that, you know, we looked at 20 years and there was, you know, I think half a dozen extra offices. Roughly. You know, if we wanted to look at a shorter timeframe, we just to make, we just need to make sure that there's expansion available. You know, there's always the, the opportunity to go up, which creates its own issues. It increases the costs upfront as you build your, your lower level to make, or to handle the second floor. You've also got some wasted space, and then you've got an elevator shaft that you've got to figure out. So, you know, but in a perfect world, it would all be a one-story, even the expansion would be one-story. So, in this location, expansion, uh, you know, we could expand a little bit to the east, but if it was going to be a rather large expansion, have to be up unless we started buying properties, which always has the potential to create issues.
So are you saying that the land that we have here, plus the lot over there, plus behind there, isn't that big enough if we build new here?
No, we could build new, and that's what, that's what the architect is working on now, is to build a facility on this location, including all the property that we currently own. Somewhat restrictive, like I said, limited expansion, future expansion. But a little bit, I think, four, three or four offices in administration. I think PD, not so much in the PD. So, yes, it would work here. But without buying other properties, the expansion would be limited, and I'm, I'm assuming. But we've been here.
You know, my feeling is that we ought to just really search for a better spot. I mean, to me, this is always just going to be kind of added on to, and, and we're starting with the buildings that are in bad shape to begin with.
Are you saying not even build here new?
Right.
I would be wanting to build here, but I don't want to spend much time into these buildings.
And that's, that's kind of where we're at now with, with the 23 budget. Like I said, we could reduce that half a million down to 150 to 200 and start look, and investing that in architectural fees instead of maintenance in these buildings.
Would that, would that dollar amount take care of any patchwork that would need to be done? Like, I mean, if we're, that's our plan going forward, we're probably going to have some things to keep this, this thing up and running for a few years.
We'll have some ongoing maintenance here. You know, best-case scenario for a new City Hall, and even a Public Works building, you're, you're looking at a year to design, and then probably eh, 18 months to build. Will kind of be my, my thinking. So you're looking two years out minimum. Probably closer to three by the time all is said and done. So we'll still need to spend some money. We've got a roof leak in somewhere over here, we discovered this week. So, you know, we'll get a hold of our roofing company and have them come take a look at it, see if they can locate it.
I, I'd really like to pursue the, I, just as a point of discussion, a lease-to-purchase kind of thing, just because I'm thinking it would be less cash flow out of our pocket over here, and maybe we could actually get it done. Not saying that that's the answer, but I think we should at least look at it, um, rather than just, just say, oh, no, we want to do that. I think we need to be open to that.
I agree.
And maybe, uh, there's a builder out there that could get a tax benefit, and he gives us a break. I'm not a tax person.
And again, location, I just feel like, you know, besides me getting on this recently, I had no idea where any of this stuff was. If you would drive downtown, you haven't, I mean, it would be nice to have the, the City of Brandon to have, you know, something that you, you knew where the central offices were, you know, like you knew. So whether it be location, whether it is end up down here, but it just got, the look looks, looks better, or if there's a better location that we could, you know, display who we are.
You know, we've, we've looked at different locations. I think the original report included three or four different ones. It's, it's easy explaining where City Hall is at here. We're right across from VFW as well. We usually tell people, oh, okay, we know where that's at. With the way the city is, has developed, we've got very limited commercial retail space for development, so, you know, in my thinking, you'd want City Hall somewhat centrally located or easy access for citizens. But at the same time, you don't want to take up prime commercials, real estate on Split Rock. Or Holly. You know, we're, we're, the facility for City Hall is, I think we've got it down to about 30, 32,000 square feet. So it's a, it's a pretty good-sized chunk that we would need, so you don't want prime real estate. We looked at the property north of the Methodist Church. We looked out, I think on the west side by Sue Valley. We looked at, at the time, uh, Mike Coughlin was looking at a town square concept just north of Housits. And I can't remember where else we looked.
On Ninety Plaza.
Oh, that's, that's right, Brandon, Ninety Plaza. And we kind of narrowed it down to either build here, or we looked, we looked fairly hard at that property north of the Methodist Church, because it's off, off the beaten path somewhat, so it's not prime commercial real estate. We turned down their offer, which was a little, a little high at the time. So that's where we're at. As far as how the financing on a, on a new building would go with either Public Works or City Hall, we'd have to explore all options. Lease purchase, um, opt-out bonding, et cetera. I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend a design-build. Where you, you go out for a request or proposal for a builder, they will design the building for you, they'll bid it, they'll build it, and then they'll lease it to you. In that instance, the city loses a little bit of control over design. You know, we had a design-build at the golf course. It was okay. But contractors usually bid that, will try to put in the cheapest stuff they can. You know, I, I remember we did a design-build in Milford in the Fire Hall, and they were specing out hollow corridors. You know, we wanted solid corridors, we wanted decent faucets, we wanted... So I wouldn't recommend a design-build. If, if you wanted to pursue a City Hall, I think we'd want to engage the architect. And then, if we're going to do some type of a lease purchase or lease-to-purchase, here's our design. Can you build this and, and would you lease it to us, and for how much?
I think that's how they do the post office. They do the show and then the post office design, but you know, it's my assumption.
So, yeah, everything as far as financing go would be on, on the table. We need to take a look at any and all options. You know, even if it was a, a lease purchase, a 20-year lease with a purch, uh, we could purchase it anytime during the term. You know, if and when we've got a cash flow that, that can afford it, we could certainly purchase it during that 20-year term, or wait till the end, or whatever.
Well, the benefit of staying here is we own the land, so we don't have to pay for the land. The disadvantage is that we'd have to phase it, and it would be cumbersome for the staff. I don't know, we have to probably move some staff someplace. So a new spot would be nice in that regard, but then we'd have to pay for the land, unless we can sell this land. How likely is it that we can sell this land for something?
Well, you can sell it.
Yeah, absolutely.
To offset it?
And there's no other land that we currently have that we could consider?
I mean, we, we own plenty of acreage out at the old wastewater ponds where the Public Workshop is planning to go, but again, not real conducive to access.
It might be a good thing, though.
At, at times, at times. You know, when we're talking about increasing golf rates, being off over there would be good. Not, not really that we own. I mean, we own, we certainly own 40-plus acres south of Aspen Park, but that's A, designated for park land, B, it's not really conducive for access.
Out on the counter.
Other than that, I, I can't think of, I mean, there's, there's been some conversations about the clubhouse, the golf course. That's not big enough for everything.
Yes, or something you could do there, where it's kind of a combo, city office, golf course?
Conceivable. Um, you know, we'd have to take a look, and I can't remember how many square feet.
It was only like 6,300 square feet.
Unlikely. You know, we're talking about a 30,000-square-foot facility for a combined facility. Now it's only about 60, 6,500 square feet upper floor.
And then we've got to have a garage for their vehicles, because there's too much equipment in them that are expensive.
Well, I would say that we should continue to look a little bit, and if there's some land that looks like it might be a possibility, then we should look into it. You know, I mean, if, if it comes down to having to do it here, I guess we'll have to do it here, but I, my, my personal opinion would be it'd be better to, to go someplace else, build it, and move some weekend. And maybe make this into an area for apartments or something.
Yeah, if, if we were to renovate here, build new here, chances are we, it would prolong the construction process, because we'd be phasing it. Uh, we'd probably have to rent some space somewhere to move part of the operation to while it's being constructed. So the, you know, there's going to be some additional cost and time there. I guess, I guess what I'm looking for for the 2023 budget is, do you want to maintain that half a million in repairs here, or do you want to cut it down to 150, 200 for ongoing architectural fees for, I don't want to say final design, but 90% complete?
I think that's what I would prefer.
Swallow half a million on a building like this.
Yeah, and then, so then would our, uh, be considered be in 2023, and then in 2024, we'd have our ducks in a row as to where we're going to go, if we're going to stay. I mean, that would give us a year and a half for research. Are we going to stay here, are we going to go someplace to buy something, be ready to pull the trigger? Because we know how long, we know how long these things take. We're still out two or three years, so that puts us to 26, 27?
Yeah, 26-ish at the earliest. Well, we hope not.
That would be my suggestion.
Like, we never just earmarking it, right? We're not committing to design. We're still looking at other options, like the golf course, I mean.
Yeah, no, we could, we could.
We had to talk about that before.
Once, once we get, you know, ISGs, it's ISG, right?
Yeah.
Yes. They're pretty much completed with a design here. We're looking at parking regulations and how many off-street parking spaces, et cetera. But that design could basically go anywhere. And in the meantime, we can still evaluate, you know, the, the golf course if you want to.
Okay.
So if we drop it down, then we're still off 500,000?
If, if we drop it down to 150?
We're about 50,000?
Yeah, we're about 50. Maybe a little bit more.
Do not take it out of the park board budget, that's all. You're saying, am I applying two cents up there?
It reminds me a lot of Dan Mastick. You remember Dan Mastick? He was the park, he was the park guy.
Yeah, protect your people.
He challenged us on issues every time about is it in the budget until it came to parks?
Well, you know, just, just looking at the budget, if we have to come up with 50, and we were talking about council wages before, that's about 52,000.
There you go. And we could come and fix the damn roof, too. Anything else, guys, on the? Lot of work here.
Any, any other ideas or questions?
Well, I guess, you know, so for 2023, it's not going to impact our infrastructure projects. The question will be how it will impact us down the road, but at this point, we don't really know, because we don't know what kind of costs we're looking at.
Correct.
But it could delay something.
Could.
Could.
We'll have to see with sales tax.
Right.
Yeah, sales tax, uh, today, it's still remaining about 17% above last year. I think this year, this month, or July's check was the largest we've had in the last three years.
Well, you know, if our, I know our fund balance is going to drop, because we have some things set out to do, but if, if we can maintain a good fund balance, there might be an opportunity to pull two or three million out of the fund balance for the building, or for Raleigh's place or something.
Yeah, you know, if, if sales tax revenues remain strong this year, you know, we, we, we might hit four or five, which would be 800,000 more. I think we budgeted 3.7. So, that would be something that we could put away.
We are in 23, but this year, no, this year was 3.7, 3.74, I think.
So, you know, if we'd be in that four or five range, we're 800,000 above in revenue, which would go into the fund balance.
Well, it's going to be a tricky balancing act, because we did also say that any extra money we had would go to Public Works Building, the City Hall Building, parks, and the golf course, so we can't just, like, forget about everything else either, so it's going to be a balancing act. Because, because to your point, Mayor, parks board after this coming year has nothing for capital investments, and so that can be a slippery slope pretty fast.
How about the exit out of the park?
Well, we're hoping that that's going to be covered with some help from developer, but I don't see.
Those developers are looking at how they're going to develop that property down there.
That's the best improvement we could make for the park, in my opinion.
And I turn you pa, uh, attention to page 35 about the street maintenance fund, and I'll have Tammy explain a little bit, but we, uh, did get together and we adjusted that, um, kind of went over where we're at in our slurry seal and street maintenance. But I'll have Tammy give you an update on the slurry seal. We did up that quite a bit, and there's a reason for it.
35. So slurry seal, every year, we kind of go along with the City of Sioux Falls on their bid. Usually, there's only five, six communities that go onto that bid, and this year, they just invited everybody. So there was Vermillion and Del Rapids and a bunch of them.
In 2022?
Yes. And so it was a really large project, and, you know, there really wasn't any contractors locally that did this work, and so we would always get somebody, you know, out of Colorado or something that would bid the work, and that's why we wanted it as a big project. Now we have ASCO, who they're the ones who did the Rushmore area project last year. They bought the equipment so that they could do it, so they bid the Sioux Falls project, and they bid the county project, and they were awarded both of them, but they didn't have their equipment in, and they're blaming it on COVID, but they didn't get their equipment in until July-ish, and then they still had to have it inspected, they still had to teach their crew how to use it. They're way behind. They're not going to make it here this year. They're just not. I mean, they would, they're like, well, maybe in October, but we really don't want to do that when school's in session. Or I don't really want to do that when school's in session, because you're shutting down the road. And that makes it really hard for bus routes, and it makes it really hard for mobility issues, because we're not going to be able to have it open by 3:30. You know, if it, if school stayed in session until 6, 7 o'clock at night, it wouldn't be that big a deal, but those contractors have to be able to work past noon. So, um, I think moving forward, we're not going to do it this year, but then we will rebid it next year. And then we're going to have some conversations with the City of Sioux Falls. If they're going to do one big project like that, maybe we go on our own and bid it out separately, because ours is the second-largest in the area, so it's still a pretty big project. So next year, we're going to do twice as much. So this year, we're trying to do twice as much crack ceiling and asphalt repairs and curb repairs, and try to keep that moving. But we also have a concrete shortage right now, so we're running into some things there. So we kind of revised street maintenance for next year. We're not going to get everything done this year that we wanted to get done, but hopefully next year, we can do another big push and try to get ahead of it.
So we're just going to save that money in that account and then spend it then?
And spend it next year. Yep.
Which area is next for slurry seals?
So we changed it to Sylvan Circle area, just because that really means it. But there's not a whole lot of curb repairs and whatnot over there, too, so it won't take us very much to get over there.
So next year, we'd be living in Sylvan Circle plus?
Eagle Creek and Sioux Heights.
Where's Sioux Heights?
Right behind Casey's. And then we're also doing Aspen Boulevard as well. So it'll be a much larger project next year.
So hopefully Sioux Falls doesn't bid out, you know, 14 different malls for the contractor, I mean, going all the way down to Vermillion.
And Salem was in there, and, I mean, they were all over, so we'll see what City of Sioux Falls' plan is next year.
Okay.
So if we just say, you know, find 50,000 to make it balance, you do that?
We can.
With a cap on?
We, we will look at the parks and tell them absolutely necessary. Unless Devon directs us to.
Yeah, Devon, yeah, Devon. Let's see how I take care of you, Devon, I always try. We got cutting up the right of.
The plan is, Christine and I will sit down, we'll take a look at balancing the budget, we'll meet with any affected department heads, and then get back together with a budget work session on the 22nd.
Did you what?
To show here's, here's the final budget council. We've got that fifth Monday this year in August, so just in case you don't like what we come up with, we can always meet on the 29th as well. We just have to have it ready for the first meeting in September.
We just have to have it ready for the first meeting in September.
Um, all this added stuff in the stormwater fund, is that included in, uh, Alice putting this question?
Yeah, so.
Stormwater fees are different, separate?
Stormwater fee, we, when we started the program, we had anticipated a five percent increase for five years, so we'll increase that revenue five percent next year and kinda, we do have a plan to get some things rolling this year, and then you've got a plan to get some things to do some stuff next year. So we kinda have a, a plan in there, so that's why all of those numbers changed a little bit.
Um, I also know that we, at some point, require our group some money to do some boulevard work, you know, where we're at on that.
Yes, so Oak Ridge Nursery is going to take the boulevards in front of the elementary school in Brandon. So there's a planter there that the Lions takes care of. They're planning on doing like a hundred and thirty-nine plantings in that area. And then in the boulevard, they're gonna try to do some no-mow grass, so it grows to like eight inches and then it just kinda topples over. And it's supposed to not need a whole lot of water, so no irrigation, but it's supposed to stay green, so we'll see how that goes. Um, going past like Taco John's and all the way up to kind of our, I call it a pocket park over by Maple by the middle school. That's all gonna be split rock landscaping, and I met with him again, um, a couple days ago or yesterday. And he's got some good ideas of going through there, so he's gonna put together a proposal. And then I have Impact Landscaping looking at the boulevards down by Sioux, so right in front of Scooters. And then there's that detention pond there that has a lot of erosion because it's all sand, so something there with zero scaping would be perfect. Kind of the problem there is if they are gonna need a retaining wall or not, so we're kinda working through that. And then that landscaper did come up with COVID this last week. So he's still working on some things, but I think he's pretty sick, too. So I don't know if I'm gonna have those proposals all put together by the fifteenth, that council meeting, but I should have, uh, landscapes and Oak Ridge, so those two could at least start it. And then we would plant it all this fall, and then there might be a little bit of cleanup work next spring, so.
So is that impact a local person?
Impact a local person? We're just working in the boulevards.
They're in Sioux Falls, you, you made a contact.
Oh, yeah, no, Impact is here in Brandon.
He is local?
Yeah.
So we would get three different kind of ideas, what to do with the boulevards that hopefully will require less maintenance, less water, and never be a lot.
And one thing to keep in mind, though, is we don't have money in the budget for next year, right? So they're gonna start it, we might need some help on maintaining it a little bit and keeping it going next year. That's the only thing I'm kinda worried about.
Who's supposed to be, is First National supposed to be taking care of that planter, you know, that's?
Lion.
The lion?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. What is the First National sign on there? Are they the one that started it?
It might have escaped for it.
Is it just First National sign? On that, we talked about that Sioux Metro dues, and now that we have Patrick on board, that's not quite as important as it used to be. Um, but somebody needs to give Jesse a heads up on that?
Yeah, Jesse's gonna come to, uh, helps me in the next couple of months. Uh, we got a letter from him the other day with our dues and then, uh, outlining their, um, functions that they'll perform or will perform or do perform for cities. And I invited him to, I gave him the, oh, I think the next three council meetings, having her back as to which one he wants to choose. So we're, we will evaluate that list and see what services we're getting. Did you find out, do we have a timeline to not preempt that? I, I haven't looked at the. Looked at it, yes. Thirty thousand dollars. Yep, thirty-three, we changed.
Three dollars per resident. I don't know, like, if you can scale that back and just give up some.
No, it's in the, it's in the contract, it's in the agreement.
Over three thousand population, you pay three dollars per resident.
So like, what happened to that force of gas here?
Do you know just if it has?
Yeah, they have, um, you know, they've, they've kinda switched their focus where they would like their communities to sign a separate contract. And then they hire somebody to, to help out that community specifically. So I think what they've got is one economic development professional for like three communities, uh, for fifteen to sixteen hours a week. That's what they've been pushing now for about a year. Um, and I think they brought on two staff members, three staff members. Two at least.
Yeah, at least two. They're the two guys that are kinda just out of school.
Yep.
They just hired someone new to do.
Correct.
Kind of marketing. I think she knows where they can hear us.
Yep, so.
Do you lean on them a little bit?
Um, I think they are trying to find a way to accommodate us by doing all sorts, like the newspaper article I've done and the podcast, and we're doing the GOED video tomorrow. I think they're trying to find a way to stay profitable for us.
That's a great one.
Yeah. How come we still have thirty-three thousand of them?
So I, I need to Jesse on occasion that we talk about request for information from GOED, but we get those directly from each GOED and maybe spot it there, so.
But we'll go through the list. It's, it's about a two and a half page list of services that they provide their member communities. About two pages of services they provide, and then the third page or half a page is if you hire one of their professionals. So we're gonna go through that, and I think the Development Foundation could go through it as well and see which services we've been provided.
I, I, I know the feeling of the Development Foundation already.
So, um, I will tell you that Patrick has been fantastic. And working with him both on P and Z and at the Development Foundation is doing a fantastic job. Um, he's giving the city more than Sioux Metro and Makita Lakita before that ever happened, so.
So I think we have to, but I don't think, I don't think it's fair to like just cut them off at the knees. I think we just need to warn them and say, well, I, 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 you know, I, I don't think that that's, we need to give them some warning.
Well, they just know what our outs are, you know, what, what, are we contract, contractually obligated to them for a certain time, you know?
Yeah, and I, I, I'll go back and look at that. I know there's a notification requirement in the contract or with the agreements that we've signed with them.
Can we send that as an option to discuss for this year after you look?
Mm-hmm.
Man, that's thirty-three thousand.
I know, yeah, I mean, I, I get the, being respectful towards, um, the relationship, but we're also spending taxpayer dollars here. And if they haven't done anything for us, to just say, we're gonna give you another year, I would be in favor of at least having the option to, what would that for this year?
I wonder if we can do something like it's a dollar per citizen or something, you think it's just a fine thing by laws?
It's in the bylaws.
I think it's in their bylaws.
Does the twenty-second work for everybody other than me?
You again?
Yeah, I'm out of town again on the twenty-second.
Are you coming back from Alaska?
I'll be back.
Different day works better?
Well, any day other than that week of the twenty-second.
It was gonna be super short. Can we just combine it with the briefing meeting?
Yeah, could we do that?
We, we don't have a briefing meeting that week.
Is that the week before?
The week before we do.
Could we do it before?
Eighteen.
Eleven.
Give it a shot.
I can, we can try.
We'll try. We'll shoot for that.
He's gone.
Still gone, but that's okay.
Yeah.
We'll shoot for that briefing meeting.
Yeah, just keep me posted.
Just got the mayor's waiting, uh.
Yeah. Don't be confused, I'll be.
Since you're all here, though, is there a good time to do interviews, maybe the week of the fifteenth?
Yeah.
Like, who's open that week of the fifteenth?
We've got three, three applications.
I have three here on the eighteen for four.
No, for word three.
Oh, we have three?
We've got three.
Yep.
Four?
Uh.
Thomas.
Thomas from P and Z, um.
Peterson.
Peterson, Bob, is it?
Nah, Bruce, Ben.
Yeah? Ben.
No, we have Bruce Johnson.
Bruce Johnson.
Bruce Johnson.
I, I don't have that other one.
Oh, you don't have?
No.
So you only got two, then?
Yeah.
Well, we have three.
We've got three in total.
I can't remember the other gentleman's name. He's newer to town.
Yeah.
That's Ben Peterson.
Mm-mm.
Mm-mm.
Okay, we'll send it out tomorrow once we get all of them in.
So when are we gonna do it? Eight, fifteen?
What was it called?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Four thirty.
The eight, are we just saying the eighteenth then? Are you, are you here then here?
Yes, I am.
When is that?
We have P and Z at six thirty on the eighteenth, so if we do it by that, that would be awesome.
The five?
Well, it depends on how long they talk. Some, some candidates talk longer than others.
How long did it take when you were here?
It was about a half hour each.
A half hour each?
I think it was.
You guys grilled us with all those questions.
Really?
To stay off some votes.
That was ten? Might do it at five then?
Sure.
Eighteenth?
Eighteenth work?
See if we get any more candidates. If we do, we might have to move to three thirty, or four, three.
We could do the budget then, too. Do them both. Be done with it.
You can get interviews.
Depends on how long interviews are.
Sure, well, we'll start at four.
Yeah, you wanna start at four?
Well, I mean, if we're gonna do them both.
Yeah, I think in the budget, it shouldn't take long, little percent.
It shouldn't take long.
You know, here's the changes that we came up with. Do you like them or not? If you don't like them, let us know.
I'd just soon do them both in one time.
Okay.
So what time?
Four thirty then?
Four thirty, four thirty and five?
Sure.
I give you more time.
Yep.
And there ends up being a lot of last minute candidates that just converted, you have another half hour?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll just be playing by ear.
Okay.
So they have to tomorrow?
Fourth, thirty.
Four thirty.
Yep.
Since you're looking at your calendars, Mark, September seventh will be the city's appreciation golf outing. Super exciting. September seventh, it's a Wednesday.
What time?
Uh, registration starts at eight thirty.
Oh, I've got a staff meeting.
Yeah, about that staff meeting.
It will be a very productive staff meeting for some of us.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll see where loyalty lies.
What happens at the city golf outing? Would you just like invite?
Yeah, we invite the contractors, people we did work with, consultants. It's just a thank you.
Good.
Messers.
Good.
Yeah, park board and, yeah. Dennis always organized it, so Patrick and Andrew are doing most of it.
It's a good idea.
So if you put a team together, let Patrick know.
And it's highly competitive, just so everybody knows.
I'm sure it is.
I heard there's pyrotechnics on every hole. Maybe a petty candidate.
I think it's kinda whatever your foursome decides to play.
You plan to meet. Go ahead. Patrick, Brian's with me, and you, you and Brian. And David, David will play too.
Yeah, I don't think you can get Brad. Okay, are we done?
I think so.
Anything else?
Take a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion, second to adjourn the meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Pose. We're adjourned. Okay, we gotta go meet with Stan now.
Stan?
Did you see the list?
Huh?
He's got the list.
He's got a list already?
I guess. Guns. Fundraiser.
We've got, you see that little Gatling gun?
Jesus, I tell you, they've got more.
Nine millimeter, a nine millimeter Gatling gun.
I did see it. I almost said to the guy, whoa, there's a nice kid killer, Jesus.
Well, yeah, they're legal and they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be done for that, that's, uh.
No, I was talking about the Uzis or whatever the hell they are. Geez, they got a lot of those.
And, uh.
Those must be popular.
Those little thick ones?
Oh, I mean, they got a whole wall of them there.
Yeah. When you take it off?
Tomorrow morning. Five o'clock flight.
Five AM?
Yes.
I'll see you there.
You're gonna be there?
I'll, we fly out at five thirty in the mag.
Really? Where are you going?
Charleston.
For what purpose?
It's my wife and I's anniversary.
Really?
We've never been.
Well. Okay.
Doesn't seem as fun as last year as a dude, but.
I wish I was a little bit more excited about it, to be honest with you.